All right. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled January 3, 2022. School, the New Year, I'll call this meeting to order. As a reminder, if anyone has audio or video recording, please let us know now. There is no one in the audience here today. There are some people in virtual audio.
I can hear them.
And nobody is. Thank you. And now I have a question. The pledge of allegiance to the five United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all. Let's go to the real talk here.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Schillert.
Gordon Sched, Superintendent of Schools.
Derek Julio.
Bill Fonseca.
Nick Cassidy.
Kathy, are you there?
Kathy Solevsky, Recording Secretary.
You're Kathy. Thank you. Perfect. So we have the approval of minutes set.
I'm going to approve the December 20, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Which were made by Bill, second by Antonella. For the discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And then motion carries for today. For the opportunity for any visitors to address the committee. So if you are on virtually and you need to address the committee at this time, please raise your hand and we will let you in. Seeing not only before with the agenda, some pretty getting communication. Are you?
No, for me, thank you.
No, nothing for you. I don't have anything today. Bill?
I've got the CTEC students of the month for the month of December. Asmatology, Jacob Rice, information, support services and networking too, George McVeil, and landscaping technology and horticulture, Seth Moore. Congratulations on those three students.
Congratulations. Bill? Next.
Um, I wish I had something, but this is our first day back at school and last week was a little short, so I actually don't have anything.
Go ahead. Okay, welcome back to school. Next, next. All right. So moving forward, we have an update on the health data. So we were going to bring in Kelly and Tammy for this part.
Kelly, Tammy Spencer, our Director of Health, and Frank Page, our Principal of Health.
Start video.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Welcome back. Thanks for joining us tonight.
So what we'd like to do is first just give you an update of where East Long Meadow has a community. OPS from my last reporting prime, which was 22nd of December through today. And Kelly will help us understand some of the changes to DESI guidance around quarantining and isolation. And then I know that.
There's no sound. Yeah. There's no sound. That's right.
Not at all?
Nope.
We're working to make it so that you can hear us better. Can you hear me?
Can hear Sarah.
Okay. We're working on getting it fixed.
So you can hear Sarah, but not Gordon?
Yes.
They can hear Sarah because she unmuted.
Um, I can hear Gordon.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still coming out.
I muted now.
It's kind of a service. Okay. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Fixed.
All right.
You missed that fantastic introduction? Basically, what I had said, and I apologize, just to quickly reiterate, we'd like to provide an update as to where the community is, then become a little bit more specific as to where ELPS is in terms of COVID cases, and then just talk about a few strategies possibly for January to hopefully mitigate risk and make sure that we keep students and staff safe. So Tammy, if you're okay, we'd like to start with you just to get a sense of where the community is right now. And then I can become more specific with the numbers in ELPS.
You've got it. You've got it. I'm sorry if my voice starts fading. The Christmas cold got me and I've used it too much today. So I will be as loud as I can. Okay. So for the last reporting period, which was the two weeks before last, so we, the rolling reporting period always reports out a little bit. So while it's a little indicative of what we're seeing right now, it is still almost a week away. So a week off. So in that reporting period, we had 237 total cases with a positivity rate of 10.91%. And to put it in perspective, Handen County's positivity rate is right at 11.02%. So we're just below it. So when you look back at this week, this period last year, our highest two-week period was actually only at 174 total cases and a 7.6% positivity rate. And that highest week is actually the week, this period, we're experiencing right now. So last year, this is, it's the same thing. I'm assuming this is how we're going to see this week go. But if I break it down right now, as of today, so who are the people who are positive and isolating? So now that there's a bit of a change to an isolation period, so our isolation period is now five days and returning back to business as normal on the sixth day. So if I take that window right now, there's about 122 people in town who are positive. And their average age is about 39. 39. 76 of those 122 people were vaccinated and 22 were boosted, but most of them are boosted very recently to exposure date. And then as for our vaccination data, we are hovering around 67% fully vaccinated, which is still higher than the county, which is at 61%. So that's, that's the news.
That's a, that's a reporting 14-day window that ended on December 25th, correct?
The 25th, yes.
So we're, we're still looking, this next reporting window will pull in next, our last week.
Yes.
Six through the second.
So when I, so when I was doing today's data, so a lot of that, a lot of the numbers that I pulled up today, actually I, I was able to eliminate one by, by the today's being today, the sixth day for some people. So 50 people actually came out of isolation today. So I mean, that's a sort of a positive side of it. Yes, we have a lot of people in isolation. We also have a lot of people leaving isolation as well. But if we look at it, so what, I'm assuming this reporting period that we're experiencing right now is going to be very similar, like it's going to be the high period like we saw last year.
Last year, our highest level was somewhere around 174?
Yep, 174.
Right now, we're at 237.
Yeah.
Just to give you an idea of the schools, and so it's a little bit different in terms of our reporting, where DESI asks us, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asks us to report every Wednesday. And they ask us to report just the positive cases Wednesday to Wednesday. There was no reporting required last week. So this coming Wednesday, I'll be reporting cases from basically 12/23 to January 5. It's going to be a high number, similar to what Tammy's saying, because of some of the numbers you're going to hear right now. So this is right now, 12/23 to January 3. Basically what we're seeing in our schools and what we learned today. Now, I'll lead off with the high school because the high school, one has the largest enrollment, but also then has the highest number of positives. So in that time period, some of these people, similar to what Tammy just said, have now come through their isolationist period and they're back in and we're in school and they're fine to be in school. But during that time period, we had 46 positives. 41 of those were students. Five of those were staff. That's at the high school. And I know that Mr. Page will kind of break that down a little bit for athletics for us in a moment. But moving then to Virsland, we had 16 positives during that time. Two were staff, 14 were students. Mountview, we also had 16 positives during that time. This is the only school where we actually had about an even split, eight staff, eight students. And then Maple Shade, we had nine positive, one staff member and eight students. And then Meadowbrook, we have 23 positive. Again, during that timeframe, some of these individuals now are out of their isolationist period and back into school and are certainly coming. Of the 23 positive, we had seven staff members and 16 students. So we are seeing a much larger number than weeks that I've reported in the fall. And so we most likely will see a similar type surge that we saw last year and that Tammy was talking about, you know, moving forward into January. With that said, Mr. Page, I think was going to update us, just to give you an idea. Some of the areas that were hit the hardest at the end of December were our athletic teams. And so I just wanted Mr. Page to give us an update. In some cases, we did have to postpone some games and shut down some teams for a short period.
Hi, everyone. So we started this conversation the week prior to going on holiday break, just because we were starting to see that, that surge in cases at the high school. And some of those cases were directly linked to some of our athletic teams. So we were just hoping to kind of continue that conversation tonight and maybe talk about some strategies that we thought might, might help going forward. One of the conversations we did have though was about our athletic programs as a whole and, you know, what strategies we might have to implement in order to, you know, address potential outbreaks on teams. Unfortunately, going into break, we did have a number of teams that did have some outbreaks there. You know, we, we had girls' basketball, which had a few, but we were able to, to isolate those, those players. The staff connected to that program where we were able to continue on with that varsity team. Unfortunately, for some of our other teams, like our hockey team, our boys' basketball program from the freshman through varsity level, both going into break and then over break, we did have to postpone games and, and practices due to a significant number of cases connected to those teams. But we did take the strategy of targeting the specific teams instead of shutting down the entire program because we did feel that whatever approach we take does have to be both targeted and progressive. Where, you know, we were aware that there's certain teams where we weren't, we weren't seeing cases. So it didn't make sense to us to shut down that entire program if there were no cases connected to that program. For example, even though it's changed since going into break, we really didn't have any cases connected to our swing program, even though since then we have had a couple, you know. So, so the strategies have been, at this point, you know, targeting specific programs. And sometimes within those programs, the specific levels of teams within it and postponing and isolating. You know, once we feel like there might be too many cases connected to that team where we feel like we have to shut it down for at least a little bit of time.
And you have to say our, our coaches and our athletes have been doing a fantastic job of trying to make sure that we are engaging in all the safety protocols and practicing with the mind of cohorts and so forth. So then when you get into contact tracing, you're not losing hopefully an entire sport for a period of time. But you might be, as Mr. Page was saying, losing just a few players or maybe one level of that sport, which has been the case in some of our.
Yeah. I will just chime in on that piece with what Mr. Smith was saying, that both our coaches and players have been great in terms of working with our nursing staff to report information. You know, whether it was symptoms or test results, which did help us navigate certain situations and help us make those determinations, you know. And just a quick shout out to Ms. Mazza, who has been very busy the last couple of weeks. You know, she's been working hard. So we appreciate everything that she's been doing.
She's been fantastic. The lumbar has been fantastic all of our.
Yep, no.
Worked, even though technically their email said that they're on break, most worked over break.
Of that 46, how many of those would you, can you, if we say how many of those were actually linked to athletics versus others outside of athletics?
I can, we could, I don't have the spreadsheet right here, but we can tell you exactly how many.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I don't have those specific numbers in front of me. I can tell you, like, for example, that week going into break, we did have nine positive cases on our hockey team, which obviously, you know, forced us to, to shut down that program for an extended period of time just to make sure everybody had the ability to isolate if they did have symptoms, but also test if they were close contacts, which we identified the whole team as close contacts.
And then that five staff members?
That, that's not all coaches.
But are some of them coaches?
Some are coaches, yeah.
One is a coach who also had a dual role in the building of coaching teaching.
So one of the things that, as we're looking at this, given that, yes, we have had situations where we've had to shut down a team for a period of time, but our teams are coming back online. And we, we however are a little bit anxious about the fact that we're at a surge at the high school and probably all our schools. And so one of the most challenging times for us to keep people safe are when we have an indoor sporting event and you're putting everyone into the bleachers, the same bleachers. And so we did have a proposal, am I correct, Mr. Page?
Yep.
At least for the month of January, while we look at these numbers and make sure that if it is a surge, that we're doing everything in our power to keep people safe, that we don't revisit necessarily the same approach we had last year where we were dealing with a lot more unknown. And I think we limited our attendance to two per athlete or, and then we expanded maybe to three per athlete. We're actually recommending, and jump in, Mr. Page, if I'm incorrect, four per athlete, which would allow for both family members and possible students to come through that athlete's passes, at least for the month of January, or even for the next two weeks between this meeting and the next meeting. So then we can look and see, is this going to continue where we have 46 positive cases? And jump in, Mr. Page, I don't know if I represented that as well.
Yeah, yeah. So similar to what the approach that we took with our athletic teams, we want to take a similar approach to what we're doing with some of our indoor athletic events where, you know, we don't want to go in all or nothing, that zero sum approach, where it's either, you know, everybody can come or nobody can come. But obviously where, you know, we're seeing increased numbers across the school to take a little bit of a step back here and reduce crowd capacity a little bit, but at the same time, still allow family members to attend, some of our students to attend. But do it in a manageable way while we see this, this spike that we're going through at the moment. So our thought was to take a similar structure to what we did last year, where we limited the number of spectators connected to each athlete to two. This year, we were thinking four. We definitely feel like that's a number that's manageable, but it does allow us to take a step back for the month of January only. We weren't looking to do this across the board or indefinitely. But just to give us a chance to evaluate where things are at and, you know, do things safely at those games.
Would that be four for visitors?
Four for visitors.
And?
Yeah. So we would also, we'd have to word that information out to our, our opponents as well over the next few weeks.
So, but I think if the goal is to have students there, I don't know if that four number is going to get them there because if the goal is to get students and family, then I think perhaps the two is the work and then open a, a limited amount of seating for students. And once it's full, it's full. I think if we go four per family, you're not going to get any students. I was like, you know? I don't know, Frank, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could come up with a capacity number. I don't know if you want to put a percentage on, on the space capacity in there. You know, we, we came up with that number where those students would have the opportunity to distribute those to parents, but at the same time, not every kid has siblings who are going to be attending those games, where they could distribute those tickets elsewhere.
The advantage that gives, that this allows is that you can do it ahead of time. Where if you're going to limit the capacity, it's kind of first come, first served. So you're always going to be.
Yeah.
The ones you have students get tickets at school the day of. First come or lottery, however you want to do it. I just, I, the students have lost so much in the last two years. I know you know this, Frank, but, you know, to keep taking things away, if our objective is to get students in the gym, I don't know that that four number gets it there because.
Yeah.
In terms of four per athlete.
Per athlete. You can have, you know, 80 people in the stands, but I think two per family, I don't know. Because some have kids though, too, like younger.
Yeah. I'll say intent for me is not necessarily who comes in, it's just limiting the number to try to bring things down while we, while we have a surge.
Are we not having varsity games?
Yeah. We're, we're, we're pretty packed. And, and I think right now, the conversation is probably focused on our varsity girls' and boys' basketball programs, just because that's probably where our biggest numbers are. But our, our thinking here would be, you know, this would be a structure we having in place for all of our programs that are taking place at the high school. So we'd also be, you know, including swimming and wrestling in those capacity limitations as well.
Why, why are we on this? What, are we seeing transmission as a sport event? Well, we're seeing transmission at school. And this is actually the. Are we seeing transmission at school? Yeah, we're seeing close.
Yeah.
Why is that, Kelly?
Or it's, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's not in school and it's outside of school. We don't know what, you know, we don't know what students are doing outside of school.
Transition and become positive more so than we did last year.
This is, so what's more so though? Like how many close contacts have, have this year?
I don't have that specific number.
Like a handful though, or 100?
It's not 100. It's, it's, you know, in each grouping, we're seeing more than, like last year, I was able to report at the end of the year, and we had, I don't know, Kelly, was it two close contacts that actually transitioned and became positive?
We weren't even sure if it was in school. It was hard to pinpoint.
One to two close contacts turned to positive, especially in the month of December. That's really where it started to happen.
Oh, we weren't, we can't.
No, it's not.
Back in the same ways.
Well, yeah, but it was at the end.
But that's in terms of like when we were spiking?
Yeah.
Like right now, we're at the peak and we weren't back.
We were not back in. We weren't even in high point. So.
We are at the highest point we've seen in our community. We don't have anything to compare in retrospect to that in terms of. When we were at our highest.
Oh, we had sports.
We had sports, but we weren't then taking our athletes and putting them back into pools and they were in a very different model. They were co-competitive. They were playing more like in those.
Cohorts.
Yeah.
Even in, did we have anybody on yours last year?
At the end, we transitioned like.
Yeah. And if I can, if I can chime in, I think the environment's different now. I don't have a, I'm not, I'm not obviously a doctor or a public health official to, to answer all of these questions. I will say, last year on all of our sports teams from September through June, we had zero on, in-team transmissions. I can tell you definitively, if we're just looking at that as an example, there's been multiple teams where we've had in-team transmissions. Like I referenced with hockey before, it was pretty obvious there. There's been cohorts of kids that are connected with each other, who there have obviously been identifications as close contacts and then positive tests shortly after. You know, it, it's just a different environment than what we were looking at last year. And what is difficult about a varsity basketball game where you have, let's say, 200, 300 people in the gym is there's really no structure that you can put into place that will allow you to effectively contact trace in that environment.
Or.
How many feet are?
Keep the three feet or more apart.
Well, we taped off bleacher last year, didn't we?
We did, but we also had a few, we had two. I mean, it's much easier last year because you already had a limited number.
We went a little out of gas, right? See, I don't want to get into all that. Like. And Frank, I think the teams' transmission is, they don't wear masks collectively when they're together, right? The teams.
Are you talking about like outside of school? What, what are we talking?
No, I'm talking about in school.
Are we talking about, who are we talking about?
All right. I was thinking outside, Frank. When they played soccer, they didn't wear masks, but.
Oh, yeah.
Are they wearing masks all through practice and everything? Are they?
That's the, that's the expectation. I mean, that is the expectation. The games I go to, the players are. But I mean, a lot of us have played sports here. I think when you're in season, there's a lot of times that you connect with your team that is outside of a practice or game structure, you know. We really didn't have any in-team transmissions in any of our fall sports. It's definitely, we've seen a different environment in our winter sports. I don't know if that's new to the, due to the new variant. I, I don't know, you know.
How many events are we talking about in the month of January? Like.
A week. Basketball generally plays twice a week, correct, Frank?
One over the way.
Yeah. So we usually have two, if you're talking girls' basketball, boys' basketball, there's typically two games for each of those teams each week. This doesn't necessarily always necessarily mean home games. I can, while you guys are talking, I can briefly pull up the schedule.
Yeah. Frank, why are we getting the head of CDC and DPH? Why? Because none of this is coming down from above you. Why, why are we doing this now? Any preventative?
I mean, I'm just looking, I'm trying to look locally here is, you know, where we're coming from is we have really high numbers in the school. We have high transmission rates amongst our, our age demographic, you know. So we're, we're just trying to be cautious and safe. You know, I can tell you, I did talk to principals at some of our local schools, like Long Meadow, Minnetoga, and they are all having the same exact conversation.
So, so if, if students are the issue and not the families, right? Families are our issue. Can we agree to that?
Are we talking about at the games?
I'm saying they're not showing up in our numbers. And so it's the students that are really the issue, the number of students at the games? Is that, is that fair? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. I mean, I guess I was more looking big picture. But I guess if it, it's not necessarily eliminating students, it's more just limiting the crowd from the big crowds we have to a smaller number.
I just hate taking stuff away. Taking so much. We're not interested in doing any of that.
So I don't know, but how do we know this is the worst? When if February is worse? When if March is even worse? When if April is worse? You know, that's what I'm saying. If we wait for CDC, at least collectively, we're all doing it together. If we, if we just start doing things willy-nilly, like some schools canceled today. I realize that some of them have staffing, but I bet some of them just canceled because of all the hype too. So I don't want to do that necessarily. I'm just trying to not overreact.
Yeah. And Greg, if you look at what's happening in Springfield, I think, you know, Sarah and Antonella can speak to that a little bit. You know, they've, they've completely eliminated fans from all their indoor athletic events. I'm not looking to go to that road, I'm not looking to go down that road at all.
It's all pause right now.
To cancel all the sports. That's what I'm saying though. Like that's an overreaction.
I would, I would agree. I would agree. That is, we're, and we're not looking. I, I would agree. I would agree. That is, uh, we're, and we're not looking to go down that road.
Their entire teams were getting, were getting it. So what are they?
Yeah, what are you going to do? He was like, we're both choice.
My question though, and I'm not necessarily against this idea, but my question is, are we only really able? To impact basketball?
Well, this would be, this would be for all sports, not just. This adds the most.
No, I get that, but hockey isn't played on our property. So how do we then control what's happening and?
So, uh, am I correct Frank?
Uh, so unfortunately, we would not be able to enforce any rules over at the Olympia where the hockey team plays. They, they, uh, that's run independently from us. So we'd only be able to control what happens at our site, which we'd be talking about basketball, swimming and wrestling.
So it's four sports, right? It's four games. If we're giving out tickets, we don't, uh, don't get it in our staff at the Olympia that takes the tickets?
So, uh, the, uh, the Olympia, um, site is staffed by the PVIAC. Uh, and they're the ones to command that game. We, we, we're only responsible for like crowd control when it comes to athletic events at the Olympia.
Which means we also couldn't monitor masks because of that place at Olympia because West Virginia wasn't allowed, aren't they? That's how mandate for masks. I, I, I understand the idea and I really do in some ways believe in it. I just, I was a little hesitant right now because I feel like we're targeting certain sports. Only because that's all we can control. We can't control track or indoor track because those aren't our facilities. We can't control hockey. I still want.
You're talking about four, fourteen basically. Four sports with somehow JV and freshman. Yeah, so you're targeting, I don't want to use the word target. It's the wrong word, but.
We're focusing on four sports because they actually, their games reside in our.
Well, they're getting, they're getting reprised. And that's the issue. Well, really the only issue is the two basketball games, the R C games, right Frank? That's really the, the capacity issue.
Um, so I, I would, I would say that, uh, swimming is a little tight as well. Um, we'd have to work with them a little bit. Uh, just because it's obviously also a smaller facility. Um, we don't have those huge crowds at wrestling, um, where it would probably not. Be an issue there.
Frank, is the PVIAC thinking of doing anything as a league?
Uh, so this is the number one agenda item for their Wednesday meeting. So they are, they are going to be discussing this amongst the A Ds on Wednesday. But they won't do anything without a board vote and the board vote would be, I believe it's next week is the next board meeting.
I think we should wait for CDC because we start making up our own rules. I know we want to be safe and protect our. Community, but.
But we did follow PVIAC rules last.
Well, we have to. Yeah, I'm hoping they don't vote, I'm hoping they would all vote to limit participation.
Well, the other thing is CDC may say something by then too.
Yeah, and if, if somebody comes from above and says we have to do something, we have to do it. I'm just saying CDC has been on the more, um, conservative side, I would say, so why not wait for CDC? Right, because holistically as a country, we should be dealing this with together or as a state at least. If this, if the governor came down and said, I'm limited for internal, inter, you know.
I mean, I do, I understand that, because when we think about, I think Frank's point, like, community, like we're. Almost three and a half percent higher positivity rate now than where we were last year. And we had more restrictions in place at this point last year, even though we. Like I just said, had three and a half percent less transmission. So I get that from the community perspective and like wanting to then maybe limit fans because fans will be unmasked. Living in our community, you're living in Camden Academy where we have eleven percent positivity rate could be then transmitting to students. In the stands. Like I get that from the perspective of trying to eliminate. And in some ways. But my concern is we're kind of stuck. Into how much of an impact we have when we talk about all of this stuff, because we can only really impact basketball from the last night.
I mean, for track at least, like we go to places really far away now because we can't go to areas that we used to go to. So they don't let parents come in at all. So it's just our team and our coaches. So they don't let parents come in at all, but I mean, like. At, um, these larger games of the school, I totally understand. I mean, like I haven't gone to one this year, but I've known in the past it got, gotten like really crazy. Uh, for like smaller ones like wrestling, like I've been to one of those meets and there's not a huge crowd. It's because they're in the small gym and it looks like there's a lot of people in there. But that's where I think some of the, like, that looks like there's a lot of people in there, so like. And I know you can't just move it to the large gym, but like if we could like space things out, at least for those smaller sporting teams, then they wouldn't be affected by it.
What do your parents think about not being able to go to your events?
I mean. They're upset about it. There's nothing they can do because it's like not any of our places, but I mean, like, e- everything's filmed, so they can still watch it. Which isn't that bad.
So are they, these are private facilities.
Yeah, so.
So they, they, they can set their own.
Yeah, we usually go to colleges, so their rules, it's either you wear your mask and parents don't come or you can't come at all.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's nothing we can do.
Okay.
But in terms of the sports we can control, I think we can livestream those, correct?
Yeah, and I, I mean, be, when, when attendance came back. Uh, I don't know if Jamie streamed, she maybe streamed one basketball game this year, but with. Public being able to attend. This streaming isn't really an issue, if, but, but it's certainly an option.
For freshmen and J V too?
If they have the games. I mean, those games have been postponed. And that's a, and that, I mean, last year we, she was able to do that with the schedule and, and cover those games. I can't say that, yes, we could cover every freshman JV and varsity game and livestream it. But, I mean. Theoretically it's doable.
Oh yeah, I think varsity game priority, right?
Yeah, oh absolutely. I mean, we're there anyway. We only did freshman and JV. Because nobody could see.
No, no, we were thinking for that, so, yeah. I'd kind of like to hear what PVIIC, PVIIC says, you know, there this week.
Frank, you said the, the board's not meeting until next week?
Uh, I believe so. Yeah, I believe it's next week. So the, um, the athletic directors meet this Wednesday.
And we meet again on the eighteenth.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's early. I, I, Frank, I totally understand and appreciate the thought and effort, but, um. I just don't know what it's going to look like in a month or two months. That's my biggest.
Where, where I just chime in there Greg, if, if our numbers are, if we're jumping from ten percent to twenty percent, we're in trouble. You know, right now it's, it's getting very hard to manage the contact tracing as it is. Um, so, uh, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that doomsday scenario that you're, you're out on is not something we're looking at in February.
Yeah, me too. Well, if it gets that, we had a lot of people, above us would be stepping in and go, hey. Well, that's the point. That's what I'm saying. It's a, it's a, it's a holistic effort. I know we can do things locally and I'm all in favor of local controls, but.
I guess my other question before we completely say or close the door on this is, do you? Do you see this as the only means of keeping sports teams open? Or are you seeing this more as just a way of, I want to make sure like we're not. I don't want to penalize teams and have them not be able to continue to play because we're staying, you know, for.
Yeah, so right, like the, the approach to the teams is separate from what we're looking for fans. Um, like what we're doing with, with teams right now, it's very targeted. Uh, when we see outbreaks on teams, we, we isolate and postpone. Um, and that's, that's been the approach so far and it, it's worked. Um, it hasn't been like a continuation of case after case, like once we've isolated them and shut them down for a week or so. Um, i- it seems to have, uh, isolated whatever the outbreak might have been. Um, this I just see as connected to the number of cases that we're seeing schoolwide and in the community and, you know, it's just trying to. Better manage the situation for the moment. We're not really looking at carrying this as a process. Um, that we want to continue on with February, March, April. My hope, my hope is that this is the surge, just like we had last year. And we, we open back up, you know, but it's not, it's not, uh, taking that all or nothing approach of completely eliminating fans. I don't want to do that. I see it as, you know, scaling back stuff.
Should we talk about it again two weeks?
No one has a question, then we will hold on to this for the seventeenth.
Frank, Frank, would you keep us updated on PVIAC?
Yeah, yeah.
Moving just from the high school specific discussion. I know that, uh, there's been some confusion with CDC. Changes and then ultimately, um, DESI weighing in on CDC changes. And just a reminder that, uh, I know Mr. Lombard can walk us through this. As a district, the school districts, um, in Massachusetts. Follow DESI guidelines. Then the hope is that. Department of Public Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and, um, DESI are coordinating their efforts. They were coming out of August coordinated in their efforts. I'm sure that in the next couple of weeks, they will be more coordinated, but there are some differences between. What was released, uh, in terms of CDC guidance and then DESI specific guidance. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that's what DESI stands for, guidance to school districts. And so what my message was, um, in terms of highlighting certain specifics, that was around DESI guidance. It happens to mirror most of what CDC says, but I just want to make sure that families are aware. That our guidance is really coming through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I know, Mr. Lombard, if you can elaborate on, on some of that, sort of some of the changes that we've seen and we've started to discuss. Not only with our Director of Health, Tammy Spencer's on, um, this meeting, but also all of our nurses in the buildings.
So it is very confusing. You have CDC with their guidelines, you have. The Department of Public Health and then you have DESI. So we are following DESI. I mean, I don't know if DESI is, is going to change and, you know, adopt things that CDC has. But I know people hear on the news about CDC and then they are assuming that we are going to follow. But right now we're following DESI, that's what we've been doing all along. Um, and there have been some changes. A person that's positive only has to isolate for five days after symptoms or the test. They can return day six if they feel better. They don't have a fever. Uh, they have to mask for another five days. Um, especially when they're around others. Um, the, the protocol for asymptomatic close contacts is the same. They, um, so let's say you are, uh, you are determined to be a close contact. Um, so anybody that's fully vaccinated and asymptomatic are exempt from close contacting. But if you look at CDC, they have different guidelines. So, um.
Just for a moment, so what that means is. In accordance with DESI's guidance, if you have someone who is fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, even though we have identified. And CDC, by CDC definitions, they've been identified as a close contact, they are allowed to remain in school.
Regardless of?
Regardless of.
Any situation.
And we're masked in all our, our classes anyway, uh, but lunch, they, that's why the high school has seen. Uh, so few close contacts for most of the fall because many of our students are vaccinated. And so once we, now this is where the work comes in. The, our nursing staff has to, as they go through the close contact tracing, they have to then figure out vaccination history and so forth. And, and that's a decent amount of work, uh, especially if you're seeing a spike of forty-six positives. Over the last couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, and the nurses also have to look at seating charts and it's just very involved. Um, so if that person is fully vaccinated, they're not considered a close contact unless they develop symptoms. Then they need to be tested. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that at all.
Kelly, is fully vaccinated just the original, it's not the booster yet, right? Is that correct?
Well, that's what DESI's saying. Two weeks after your second vaccination, you're considered fully vaccinated.
At some point that may change to include the booster to be fully vaccinated.
Exactly, exactly.
And not yet, okay.
What process are we putting into place to collect the rapid antigen testing for? The line that says they may return on the sixth day with a negative rapid antigen test as long as it remains.
So, so that's, so right now that's a best practice. They don't have to take a rapid collection test. But close contact, um, in DESI's guidance. That, um, you're saying is quarantined. They, we would encourage them to take a rapid antigen test on day five and then to return on day six. And we, today was the first day that we've started to look at that, how would you collect those? We don't have a, a process per se in place, um, but that's one.
Yeah, how would you even, I don't know, how would you bring the test?
Yeah, you could bring the test in, I suppose, um, yeah. It's not an easy one to process.
That's probably why the CDC didn't require it.
Yeah, they're calling, well, it was, it was actually DESI's guidance. They just said it's the best practice to. The, the, most that we can do, it's really, and, and I, I want to compliment our families in this. It really comes back to evaluating for symptoms, which they've been doing on a daily basis. But in this case, if they've been deemed a close contact and they are quarantining, it's evaluating for symptoms on day five. Fever free, symptoms that may have been there have now improved, um, and then day six they can return. So it becomes somewhat of an honor system. They can let us know and they have been certainly, um, letting our nurses know. That we've taken the, uh, rapid antigen test and came back negative.
Except for non-vaccinated, there are ten days though. Is that correct?
No, no, this is, this is, uh, so vaccinated stay. This would be. This would be an unvaccinated individual who is, um, now identified as a close contact.
It's just confusing.
But even DESI, they have to have them within three feet.
Correct. For over.
For over fifteen minutes over the course of the day in order to be considered a close contact.
Right.
And non-vaccinated. So this is the point going back to the, the gymnasium for sports. If they're all. You've got to assume ninety-five percent of the spectators are vaccinated, maybe not, whatever it is.
Staffs at eighty, students are not.
You got sixty, sixty-seven percent in the community, so. Right, apparently none of that would be the right contact, right?
It's confusing, yeah, it does.
But I think to that point, like, continuing to appeal to families and spectators in the past, so please abide by.
Which was the essence of that message, yes.
Right, that's what we're asking people to do. We don't want to have to put limitations in place, however, that means need cooperation, so we don't have to put limitations in place.
Right, I mean, the, the most proven strategies are masking, distancing, in hand washing. We know that, right? So which is why that was the emphasis in my message yesterday. It's why the high school has messaged out to students and spectators that, um. You know, when you enter the building, you need your mask, you need your mask where you're covering your mouth and your nose. And outside of your group, such as if you come in with a group of three, we'd like you to distance wherever possible. Um, and that's harder to do when bleachers inside the gymnasium, we know that. Which I think is why, uh, Mr. Page is, is thinking about, at least for January, looking at that capacity. But it does get confusing.
And the changes all the time. And I'm sure by the end of the week we'll be working, it seems to be the way it is.
But I think some of the keys are the, the reduced timeframe for both isolation if you are a positive case. and quarantining, if you are identified as a close contact, you have to then quarantine. The other part of this is, we did, the school committee did vote to participate in the test and stay program. I submitted that application prior to the holiday break. I have yet to hear from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as to what the next steps are. But at least for the meeting we've done, the next steps are for us to have people trained and possibly have some individuals actually come meet with us and start to staff and set this up. My concern is, given the, the rapid antigen tests that were expected for staff where the shipment was held up, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education might have had to use their surplus supply for their test and stay program to provide districts' testing kits over the weekend. And so they're waiting for more resources to come in.
And everyone in the world is looking for it.
Correct, that's a theory, but it's.
No, I think, I think. Why else would they not give them the full amount? If they have, it makes sense, yeah. You hear every so often, you know, test, test in short supply.
So test and stay would help those close contacts, but right now, we don't have that. So what we do have is the change that a close contact who is unvaccinated, identified as a close contact now would be quarantined for five days, monitored for symptoms on day five. If you have a testing kit, a best practice would be to do the self, the home test, the rapid antigen test. Please let us know, you know, that that was negative, student can return on day six. Kelly, other highlights or do we have all of them?
No, I think that's about it, we're just waiting for, you know, to find out about the test and stay. I don't know, I don't know if, if you join this late in the game, what chances do we have, I'm not sure.
Who wants to stay catches up on their supplies?
Well, and I'm sure if they didn't intend to have a B rolling admission, it would post it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that everything that the commissioner has stressed in the last two meetings with superintendents, one prior to the holiday break, one during the holiday break, is that they want schools open. And they want all the resources that they possibly can provide schools to be at the district level to keep schools open. And that would be the test and stay program, that would be providing masks for staff. That would be providing kits for staff as they attempted to do over this weekend. We did, you know, we were able to spread over the weekend to all staff who wanted to come in again.
And the governor said basically the same thing, that he wants schools open, wants kids in school. They realize what happened last year.
I do think, just to say thank you to Mr. Smith, he did go out of his way to go and pick up materials for staff, the masks and the testing kits and, and so our administrators and our teachers and stuff. Every break feels like it's going to be a break, but it's not. And there's always.
It did help with the masks. Mr. Craig from the high school, I want to give him a shout out, he went out and got the masks. I went and got the testing kits.
But that's a lot, and then to have that be a period of meant to be set aside for rest and to not have that rest because the timing of a lot of this messaging from DESI didn't allow for that, didn't allow for it for you, didn't allow for it for members of the committee or members of our administrative staff or nursing staff. Nobody was off, and I just think continuing to recognize that and to recognize what everyone is trying to do to make sure that we can stay open to the best of our ability, that kids stay in school and that staff stay in school. It's not one piece, it's a lot of small pieces and a lot of small efforts that are really trying to make the best possible situation out of one that is extremely difficult and constantly changing. So I just want to say thank you to everybody because we could have been like one of those districts that didn't open today, but we weren't. It opened and then our kids came back, our staff came back, and we continue to weather the storm. That's extremely important right now.
Thank you. Thank you to Mr. Lombard.
Nice to meet you, Paige.
Thank you, very nice seeing you all, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Seeing everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good, Frank. Okay, that's one thing now.
Hey, we're.
One can down the road.
Yeah, right, I didn't decide on.
All right, next up, budget development process, fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
So in your package, there's just an overview, which I won't read the entire thing, but I'll give you some of the highlights just to start off the process. As you know, as we discussed prior to the holiday break, we did have a preliminary meeting with town manager and the president of the town council, as well as some others, to just look at, one, bringing or pushing back, meaning, pushing up, I guess would be a better way to say it. So pushing up the time when the school committee meets the town council to discuss what budget development for, in this case, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, is really going to look like. And what is the fiscal status of the town and, in our case, of the school district? And so in years past, we've had that discussion in February. What the town council would like to do, and I think we could be in agreement, is if we could have that in January, that would really help the process as we continue to work through identifying what are the specific needs, at least on our publications. So that's one. Just to give you a status, the last few years, as you know, not only have we been in a global pandemic, but we have looked at budget increases during that time of one point five percent in this past year and the year before that, one point three five percent. Neither of those percentage increases covered level services. And so what that meant is, in order for us to move forward into that next fiscal year, we had to reduce costs. Generally, when you're decreasing, last year was something like the level of around four thousand dollars. Our biggest expense, because we're a school district, is in our human capital for staff. And so the last two years, we have reduced staff, specifically some really important and impactful staff positions, such as the assistant principal at the high school and instructional technology specialist, a foreign language teacher at Berkeley, which then limits how they prepare and begin students' journey in studying foreign language entering the high school. Literacy coaches, which we know are going to be needed, especially as we embark on looking at putting in possibly some new literacy curriculum, but definitely some new strategies around teaching reading. The SEL position and then interventionist, interventionists, as you know, are staff members who, as we identify students who may be struggling and are at risk, we then schedule interventions where we're providing more targeted assistance and instruction to try to help those students catch up. This, as we did all of that, we never experienced the fiscal challenges that we were afraid we might experience as we looked at what the pandemic might bring. Revenues have, for the most part, over the last two years, come in at the level estimated or in the case of this year, above the level estimated for the town or the Eastland Meadow. We're in a strong fiscal state currently. We have free cash right now, certified at five point six million. I believe town manager had said that certified earlier than usual. And so we're trying to do a number of things earlier than our normal schedule or what our traditional schedule has been, so that we have this information available to make sure we're making good decisions moving forward that not only help the school system grow, but also help the town grow. So those are some of the highlights. Tax rate, one of the highlights that I didn't say, is actually seventy-seven cents lower than the last fiscal year. That's a combination of a few factors, as you know. But so we're in good fiscal shape right now. I believe that the town manager was interested, and I hope the town council is also interested, in discussing not just level services, but possibly allowing departments to actually grow and the town to invest in growth within their departments, which then drive services and prosperity for all.
It's a critical time, and I think it's right for the time, for the town to move forward, not just the school department, but the town as a whole, move forward, including us. Because to your point, the pitfalls that were anticipated never happened. And I understand the conservatism, the first year, last year kind of was a little surprising.
I will say, one of the things that, as we look to move through developing the budget for next year, but then also have our site down the road at fiscal year twenty-four, knowing that federal grants will start to be used up, that we know that we may not need these exact positions, but we will need FTEs. You know, there are certain things that we are carrying in the grants, certain positions we're carrying in the grants, that I don't think the need's going to go away just because we get to fiscal year twenty-five.
Exactly, I was just going to reiterate that same thing, Mr. Smith, to the school committee, that, you know, we are down many, many FTEs, that doesn't mean that we don't need those bodies, I think our needs may have changed. We've been talking about socially emotional since I've come to this district, and that's seven years, so that's nothing new. So imagine now with all of this, the whole pandemic, that just has, you know, gotten a much stronger, higher need. And, and I am concerned, as your business manager for the district, that I don't want to see that funding cliff end on, you know, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and all the money's gone. And if we don't try to, you know, work together and have a plan in place to get some of these FTEs back in so that we keep those adjustment counters and maybe grow as a district, that, that I just think we're going to have some serious concerns in two thousand twenty-four.
I think what we discussed, when we set the goals for the district, is really working to understand and craft that long-term plan, not only to move us beyond the impacts of the pandemic, but to move us into the future of educating students. So being able to balance those two with using the funds that have been afforded to us, state or federal grants, to help us navigate our current situation, but then figure out a long-term path forward to general educational outcomes of students for years to come. That's going to take coordinated effort. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet with the town council this month.
I think, I believe the town council is interested in having that meeting on, or at their meeting on January eleventh. And so if you would like me to provide any information to just set a specific tone for that meeting, I just need to know, I know that that was something that town manager had mentioned at our preliminary meeting to talk about moving it up to, you know, January meeting.
I mean, I think we have good talking points, solid talking points, I don't know that we're required at this point in time, nor do I think it's our position to be submitting anything in writing at this point in time, because that conversation has been, my understanding from our conversations is a more set the tone and the center, by which to launch into our official conversations around budget. So hopefully, we'll get some confirmation of much of what we've described down here, Mr. Smith, in terms of.
That's actually from the Department of Revenue.
Right, but hopefully we'll get confirmation from the town side, that this is how they're, right, what they're recognizing town's financial picture to be, so that they can then set up a conversation for expectation around budget, while we still.
And some sort of direction, not just, I think it's advantageous to us that they want to meet earlier. Because I think they need, I think both sides need to understand where we're going with this. And I don't think we even know, we know what we'd like to do, but our hands are tied because we're not sure what the town is going to want to do. And my whole, my hope is that at this meeting, we get some sort of direction from them as to where we're going to go with next year's budget. Not necessarily getting into specifics of the weeds, but just a general direction of where we're headed.
I think it's important that anyone feel, should we be discussing with them?
Do you want us to calculate before the eleventh meeting what level services would entail?
Yeah, I'm working that out for you.
Just so that we have an idea, because, you know, so one point five percent increase last year, one point three five percent increase the year before. Neither one hit what we had identified as level services. That might be an important piece for them to know, because going, you know, if they're recommending, and this is all, I understand when, you know, you're a thirty-two million dollar budget, that means that one percent increase on our budget this year is three hundred and twenty thousand, so that's, that's an incredible amount of money. But we know that one percent probably is not going to be what our level services costs or will be for next year. Two percent becomes six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, again. These are significant amounts. But we are in good fiscal shape, as a town. So this would be, given that we do not average, at least throughout my tenure as superintendent, higher than two percent, this might be the year, this is, you know, we can see an increase over two percent, hopefully higher than that.
Just adding a sense of what that dollar figure is, makes good sense, but I also think we're going into this whole thing, also listen, and to hear some of the directionality from the town side in terms of fiscal situation we're in, so that we can then move forward with what we think is appropriate.
So I do want to mention that Steve Longnigan did send a notice out stating that at this time of county, is asking that budget should be prepared as a level service. But again, I just want to remind everyone here, as well as at home, that's what we did last year. And again, because we have a large budget and we have these contractual obligations, that was a large number. And so that, you know, is our intent, again, to go level services. But it's always been determined that that conversation starts off with the school committee and the town council, right, to start off the budget process for, for us. So in open that discussion, that it's not that we actually talk. Just level service, not part of the election.
Can I ask a question? So on the eleventh, would it be the desire of the school committee to meet this way? Because the council meeting is going to be a Zoom meeting. So I have to figure out how I'm going to navigate hosting the Zoom for the council and be here to have you guys do this. So it's something to think about.
Yeah, we'd probably better agree together.
Can you, can you do it?
I don't know, I'm just standing here thinking about how am I going to do that? I mean, what? I don't think I did this.
Can you join the Zoom, just like we joined this Zoom?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, I mean, I have to think it through. I have to think it through.
Basically, would you join in there?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter who's, as long as I'm hosting the meeting, right? You're just here as one more participant, you're, you guys would be one more panelist in their meeting.
By their judge, yeah.
So, but I guess I just, I wanted to raise that question.
Good point.
Because I think all of us visualize that meeting as taking place. Because I think all of us visualize that meeting as taking place in the COA.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
Why aren't they going live? And I asked that question. They said it's not even on the horizon.
We can only control what we can control.
Correct.
So we'll be strapped to the list.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Gordon, and thanks for working on those numbers for that meeting.
Moving into, we have some grants and some gifts that we'd like to have you approve.
Yeah, so the first one, 5.1.1, no, I'm so sorry, 5.2.1, acceptance of the DESI Teacher Diversification Pilot Program Grant. And this is a competitive teacher diversification pilot program is designed to support local school and district efforts to strengthen and diversify existing teacher recruitment and retention programs. Through the use of state and federal funds, participating schools and districts will engage in thoughtful, high-impact approaches intended to increase the number of effective and diverse teachers in their schools. And this grant is in the amount of $8,564. I'd like to thank this is ground for pulling that paperwork forward for the grant.
This actually helps continue our efforts, you know, work to implement the recommendations, the high leverage recommendations from the equity audit. And we've been working with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity to look at our hiring practices and how we do everything from posting to screening and interviews and so forth. And this will help support that one.
Thank you for pursuing that grant. I move to approve the acceptance of the DESI Teacher Diversification Pilot Program Grant for $8,564. Motion made by Ann Semella.
Second.
Second by Gray. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And that motion carries for zero. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, 5.2.2, is for acceptance of a donation to high school gift account. And this is from the Bagar Bakaro Foundation at the Mass Mutual Charitable Giving Fund. And they would like to donate $1,000 to the high school gift account to be used for the high school, for the girls' track team.
Move to accept the donation of the high school gift account from the Bakaro Foundation to be used for the girls' track team in the amount of $1,000.
Motion made by Bill. Second. Second by Ann Semella. Any further discussion?
I just to highlight, it's John and Shannon of Bakaro, who I know, and it's from the Mass Mutual Charitable Giving Fund, just to give them a little applause. But they went through that, but it's certainly from John and Shannon. So thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And that motion carries for zero as well.
Okay, the last one, 5.2.3, is acceptance of a donation from Bryn Barryt to the Maple Shade Gift Account. And you'll see that Mr. Perdeth has requested approval of that $1,482.39 to go into the Maple Shade Gift Account.
Move to approve the acceptance of donation from Bryn Barryt to the Maple Shade Gift Account for $1,482.39. Motion made by Ann Semella.
Second.
Second by Gray. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And that motion also carries for zero.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. All right, old business. Start, end, and vacation dates for next academic year.
So in your package, you have the draft calendar that just outlines the start of the school year, the vacation timeframes for the school year, and then the end. It does have the November Professional Development Day established in there. That's something that we always put on the election day. But we still have to identify with the help of the collaborative committee and the leadership team. And then bring back to you would be the floating full Professional Development Day, which would go somewhere between January and March. This year, we have it on January 26th, just as comparison. And up to two half-day professional development days. We don't have those in the.
We do have the other three half-days, correct? Last day, school, Thanksgiving break, and holiday break.
Holiday break, yep.
In the second of January, that's recognized statewide, right? Is that, we talked about that.
Yes, because the holiday is falling on Sunday, it's going to, yeah, it's recognized statewide that January 2nd. And actually, I guess in some cases this year, someone was saying private businesses were recognized, in some cases were recognized in today.
Today, yeah, better.
As we are staying for the.
The trash. So what do we need? Motion?
This will be just to set the start and end of the vacations. We need a motion, and then we'll bring back recommendations on those other days.
We're more confident that there's nothing in terms of the start day relative to.
Yes, we're confident. I move that we accept the 20, the calendar as presented tonight, including convocation on the 29th of August and ELTS Professional Development of 30th and the first day of school, August 31st, for students, with a final day of school, June 14th, with no snow days. And I'll leave it at that.
Motion made by Gray.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed nay, nay. And that motion carries three to one.
Thank you. I'll take that back to the collaborative. We'll get some recommendations on the day.
All right, so 7.1 was the MOU with Unit E, and that we were going to table based on executive session, right?
Yeah, to look at the language changes that you recommended in executive.
And then 7.2 was the second part of our executive session, say, at MOU.
With leaders.
Yep.
I move that we accept the memorandum of understanding with ELEA and recognition of the ELTS narrative leader position as discussed in executive session.
Motion made by Gray. Second, second by Ann Semella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And that motion carries for zero. Thank you, John, for being with us tonight, and thank you, Nick, for being with us and welcome back for the new year. And with that, I'll introduce my motion to the chair. Thank you, Kathy, she can't see.
So.
Motion made by Bill. Second, second by Ann Semella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes, aye.
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 No, you and I.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. And that one can carry four to zero. Thank you, everybody.